Hi, welcome to the Berlin Select Board meeting for what is today Monday, June 6th. Meetings of the Berlin Board of our Select Board are generally recorded for transmission on both the Berlin Cable Access Channel and YouTube. Your voice, image, and telephone number may be recorded. We do have a lot on the agenda tonight. We also have a time certain executive session. We will both see how far we are in the agenda when we go into executive session and how long executive session lasts to sort of determine if we come back or need to come back at all. I'm hoping to do things at a fairly decent pace tonight. That said, feel free to speak up if you think I am, my decent pace is too fast because that's also a problem. It could be a problem too. Let's start off with approval of minutes of the May 23rd, 2022 open session.
Motion to approve.
And seconded.
Let's have a vote then. Oh, sorry. I can't do all of it. Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
Stone Eye.
Hey, Department, General Department, oh, sorry. See, correspondence is our correspondence to.
The only thing I have tonight that I'm going to note very briefly is that the is that Mary sent on Eloise's behalf suggestions about animal control officer and enforcement of delinquent, delinquent licenses. And I replied, and I'm, and I think I shared this with the board. I replied that my recommendation would be for the police chief who directly supervises the ACO to coordinate follow-up between the ACO and the town clerk in the future for delinquent licenses. In fact, the town gives a $5 penalty on April 1st and a $25 penalty on May 1st. So the month of April would be a perfect time to be sending out reminder notices while penalties are still only $5. So I suggested this to Eloise today. She was receptive to it and I'll talk with chief about it.
Okay, Michael, I thought that draft, not draft, sorry, that sample letter from another town seemed a little harsh to me.
Yeah, I think, I think the word you're looking for is inhumane and disgusting, but that's.
It starts off with legal language, which is not very customer friendly sort of in the first place, but yeah, some of the proposed solutions would be proposed solutions that I would not overly be in favor of.
With only 100 delinquent, about 100 delinquents at this time, a postcard would be a no brainer. So I will talk with chief about this.
Is there other correspondence?
That's the only thing I wanted to highlight tonight.
General public comment. Are there people in the audience who have something they'd like to say or share tonight before we jump into our meeting? I think some several people in the audience actually are here for agenda items. We'll get to speak on those as well. And speaking of which, while we are giving people another moment or two to raise hands, let's bring Chief Clark to the front to give the general department update. And in his general update, hopefully hit on the status of the ALS study report.
I guess I will promote chief to panelist.
It could be.
And I'll, let me just, let me just quickly touch on the ALS study report. And we had tentatively scheduled the presentation on the ALS study for, with MRI for June 21st. But given that that's a holiday week, I have asked to move it to June 27th, if that works for the person from MRI and Chief Clark.
Eloise just joined. If you just wanted to give her an update in case she's waiting for the dog license information.
Um, I don't know, Scott.
Go ahead, go ahead, Margaret.
Okay, so Eloise, I mentioned that I told the board that you swung by the office today. And we talked about this and my recommendation will be for Chief Shartner to coordinate follow-up between you and the animal control officer because postcards, especially in light of the fact that the penalty fee increases on May 1st by $20, there could be, the month of April could be very useful in sending out postcard reminders. So I'll work with chief. I'll, I'll mention to chief that we should coordinate that. Thank you.
Welcome, Chief Clark.
Welcome, everybody. How's everybody tonight?
Pretty good. Happy early June.
Same to you guys. Thank you very much. It's a, we'll start with the ALS study. I said, we had a not a real brief meeting, but a brief overview of the whole document, the TA and I with a representative. And some of the highlights that came out of it for me was current employee training. And there is some positives here that want to go to the paramedic level from the EMT level is 18 months. His online training is available and has the ability to be done while they're on duty in the firehouse. They can catch up on that. And the only thing that they would have to do is there's some testing that needs to be done when they can't be dragged from the screen. So we'd have to work around that. They talked about, or we talked about some scaled training contract. Sometimes when you train people that they walk away and go to where they think is a better job, place to work. And it's like, and this was in the last place that I worked, we had a scaled five years and the closer you get to five years, the less that the employee had to reimburse the town for the training. And it's all such that one year they pay so much, two years, blah, blah, if they left. So it's like, that's a good thing to get into the working agreement and that be something that they would work through with the TA. We were reaffirm that all the ALS rates, which, which there's multiple ones that you can do. And when we're done, if you decide to go to that, we would bring in a list of affordable rates that are good for the service and also good for the community to your board for approval. That's a minimum requirement. One of the things I was working on, on the street level here was the starting, the way the capital plant works in, in the delivery thing is two years out, working on a new engine. And one of the things I had a lot of luck with in the place where I came from as the deputy chief was to make, and here we don't have a lot of extra staff. So you're either on the engine or you're on the ambulance. If you, and is to make the ambulance, make, develop the engine. So it has storage for backup ALS equipment in it. So if they're on an engine call and there's a call for a medical that, that requires the paramedic ALS service, they respond with their engine from wherever they are to the scene. And then someone just brings an ambulance and it doesn't even matter if it's ours. It can be anybody's. But that, that makes that contact really quick rather than going with the engine and waiting for the service, the equipment to come. As soon as they get there, they can go to work. So it's like, that was very, they call it EFR at the Commonwealth OEMS level. And it was very successful in the one that I participated in. We looked at some average intercept times, which I shared with the TA and sent to the representative. And they were anywheres from January to May, just under eight minutes to over 10 from monthly average. So depending on, just all depends on where the calls are. If the, if the service is busy, that's the ones coming in like a Bolton now for the majority and also the Patriot. One of the recommendations I would make is your next chief hire. And this worked very well. Again, where I've been personally involved with this is the chief of medic. Okay. And that's a good one to run the service. But it's also a good one during the day when there's holes to fill. You don't want your chief doing it all the time, but when there's a hole to fill during an emergency, it's, it's really advantageous to have that person have that skill capability. But again, that's a decision to be made down the road when you see all the facts and figures and, and can make a decision where you want to go. Now, we, we do to a, to a retirement coming up, July 31st, have a hiring coming. My recommendation to the TA would to be make it a interim one. And until the decision is made whether we're going to the ALS and if it's, if the, if we go to ALS, then hire a medic. And if not, then stay with a BLS or a basic EMT. So, but these are all things that just the tip of the iceberg. They got, there's got a lot of depth that's going to be put into these. And then the equipment purchases is something that we don't have to worry till the very end. And it's like, it's like, I think it was 47,000 and some change to do a complete workup of ALS equipment for ambulance. And but there's also warranties that start as soon as you get it delivered, the warranty starts. So if you're going to make that decision down the road, that's one of the last things, looking at the supply and demand at the time is you want to do so that your, your warranty is extending while you're using it. And you're not using something, starting to use something that the warranty is already expired. So it's like, that's kind of it in a nutshell. And the other thing that we talked about very briefly there was we have a retirement of the fire marshal and take our answers or ask questions about where we are with that program. The lieutenant is just about two weeks away from being certified at the level one for fire prevention officer. And we're working a plan that would put him into that spot, move him to DA's, first lieutenant should be it, there's only one. And use his strengths and skills on a daily basis in the building. And, and then bring someone in, depending on where we are interim person to start. We either go to say it basic, or we go to ALS. So we still have a lot of questions that need to be answered by the the representative from MRI. But it's like, I got a, I kind of an idea. I've already gone through this once. So it's like, I kind of know where we're sitting. And then we just got to get the facts so that you can see the facts driven decision that needs to be made. And then, and then that depends on where we go to, you know what I mean? So don't worry about it. That's your decision to make. It's my job to worry about it or the next person when you guys make that decision. But the fire marshal is going the end of July, he has to mandatory retirement age, as you know, is 65. And he's sometime in July, he's 65. So you can work through the end of the month. So that's kind of like where we are. There was no outstanding issues. They got to go to a couple of mutual aid structure fires during the month. So it's like, there's some movement around the area. And, and they getting to be more involved with the mutual aid picture, which is very satisfying to me because when I came, no one called. So it's like they're getting there. The guys are working really, really, really hard to be as proficient as possible, which they, I think they always have been doing. So it's like they're getting ready to, they're getting good at, at their skill levels and people are seeing it when we work together. So that's where we are. Very proud of them. They all do a fantastic job. But you can see the numbers there. I don't have to go through those. Those are just numbers like we always have. And the ambulance billing is what it is there. So it's like, actually a good month for billing. So it's like we're right there. And then the yearly totals to date. So can I field any questions from anybody, please?
First, Peg, questions?
Although last, I have four.
No, go for it, Peg.
All right. So chief, you talked about the, the sliding scale. If someone leaves and they've gone through some sort of training and the town has paid for it. And Margaret, maybe this is a you question too. I'm assuming that's going to have to go through the union. It's just not something that we can propose or is it?
So for existing staff, it's a, that's a really good question because they are union positions already. So that's something that we would have to, we would have to discuss with the union. For new positions, we have them do this when they, upon appointment. So it's prior to them actually becoming an employee or a member of the union, we have them sign it. At least that's the way it's been up until now.
Right. So chief, my ears perked up when you said we need a new engine. Why didn't we just buy one like a few years ago?
Well, we bought, we reduced the fleet from four to three. We combined the action of an engine and an old tender, but the trucks are aging and all this one is only, I think, three and a half years from being classified as an antique, maybe four. So it's like, it gets to be time and it's when you're in the replacement cycle, it takes at least two to get it done. So it's like, that's where we are. So.
To be clear, chief, that we bought a couple of years ago into a ladder truck. This is a different vehicle that we're driving, correct?
The ladder was, is solely ladder work. Doesn't do any, it's dry. It doesn't have any water on it. It doesn't have a pump, which is like, but it is what it is. That was bought prior to my arrival. They were, they were very efficient in combining a military surplus, not a military, but a government surplus, old airport fuel truck and with a small pump on it. And they combine the capability of the engine too, which is like a, I think that's 25 years plus now. But they combine the two skills of that, those two pieces of apparatus into one, put a real good pump on a proper chassis with a lot of water on it, which we having no hydrants is, and it's very operationally flexible. I look at it like a toolbox. I like reaching into a toolbox and having lots of tools to pick from, not just one or two wrenches. That's it. That truck's got, and you designed trucks. So there's lots of wrenches in the toolbox.
This is the one you got last year, the pumper tender.
Yep, that was put into service, I believe, last September, maybe. Yep. So and the other one is just in the natural capital flow. So that's like the, some of the supply and demand issues that we all deal with on everything is put those two plus years down the road once you get them. So it's like you got to do your stuff and get it ready and, and it takes almost a whole year just to get the planning and scheduling of what you want to do together. So there's a, is a working specification that's being worked on as we speak by a very good crew. And when I came here, I guess prior to that, and it happened prior to me coming here, but one or two people made a decision for the whole department. Now we have a committee that seeks feedback from all the members. And they bring that and incorporate that into the spec, the vehicle specification. So it's like everyone has, has buy-in in on what we're doing.
I know that the ALS that, you know, Margaret had mentioned, probably the end of the month, we'll get more of a detail. But chief, what is your plans for training in-house personnel so that, you know, for maybe some of the positions, you won't need to go out and hire somebody off the street. So could you share with us what your training plan vision is or that you'll leave behind for insert new chief here?
Yep. The number one option that Margaret and I heard in that I, and I, I'm not familiar with this because I haven't been personally involved with that. It's all the ones I were involved with, you send everybody out, but they have that online training that you join, you paid it to go. It's like any kind of schooling. You pay, they do a lot of it on their time in the firehouse when they can. And the only downside of that, it's not really downside, but when they have to do testing or something, sometimes they have to go out and you got to backfill some time for them. Or if they're doing an online testing, they can't leave in the middle of a test and go on a medical call or a fire call. They have to be kind of like detailed just to that task or function. So you have to backfill them while they're doing a test, two hours, whatever the testing is. You just got to kind of like, we leave them the duties for that time. That's a really great, and two of the current ones expressed they were interested. You know what I mean? And the stuff that you got to work out that the, the logistics of it and and that's your online one in 18 months, they'd be medics, but they'd be new ones. That's why if you that, that was again, going back to the interim position is to keep that, is I'd like to move that interim so that if we, if you made the decision to go to ALS and it worked for the town of Berlin, then hire a seasoned medic to mentor these new ones when they come in. So it's like, even though you got all those skill levels, there's still a learning process involved as, as with anything new. So they come in really trained. I said, I just can't believe I, I was just, the first time, when I first got to see that in 2006, what they can do on the street is like, I'm a solid supporter of a paramedic program wherever I go. So it's just the stuff they bring and help people.
So we were a little bit past the time, sir, but Peg, go ahead and ask your last two and.
All right. So quick and, and chief, if, if, you know, this needs more time, which I'm assuming that it might in respect or in regard to the position of the fire marshal. I know when the personnel study came in, they were hard pressed to find other departments in the area who had a fire marshal. It's my understanding that other people have been trained to do the inspection. So I guess my question is to you, why is there a continued need for that if there are other people in the department can do that? And I'm assuming that that position, if it does go through, that they would be able and be capable and able to perform all the duties of the job below them and not be sanctioned out because they don't have this, therefore they can't, therefore they can't.
Well, there's a lot more to the fire marshal's position. You know, I'm going to be putting, I have to be completely honest with you. I'm putting a lot on the lieutenant's plate to have him do both. Okay. The other firefighter and, and when we move down the road, the firefighters can be trained to do certain inspections, do the propane, do the reseals, the 26Fs and things like that. But there's, a week doesn't come by here with two, maybe three plans don't come in for something. And it's, you can't do away with the position entirely. There's no way that you can do both, but we can, I, I'm comfortable knowing the lieutenant and knowing how he likes to work his, his whole work regimen that he's up to the function. I did the exact same job. I combined an operations lieutenant and the fire prevention duties into one. I did it for 16 years. So I know what he has to do and I know what they got here. The workload is maybe a little bit less here, but it's like, that's something that we can, that is feasible and it's not, it's very, very doable for the town of Berlin. So you really wouldn't be unless they needed to get some medic someplace down the road, we could do with the internal training and hiring, if you decide to go to a medic and make that hiring that's going, that's going to be, need to be made a medic. You'd have three medics in-house, two current employees, and then the new one that filled the slot would be the a paramedic and do both. And again, remember, we're not just doing paramedics or firefighting or inspections. Everyone's cross-trained to do a bunch of things and it makes a person overall, it increases it, their capability to the organization. And, and everyone's cross-trained and does more than one thing, you know, just go on medicals, you know, just go on the fire truck, help with inspections.
I couldn't agree more. I think it's absolutely critical to have the cross-trained personnel, especially in a small department.
Yep.
And last question, chief, I know that last month, I think it was last month was cleanup day. What's the status of all the antique, you know, I think it was the ambulance that's sitting in the firehouse. You said that you were going to go up and take a look at it. Is it still there? What are the plans to get rid of it? Keep it, sell it on eBay, take a photo of it?
I believe what I found out is that the old truck belongs to the association and someone can correct me if I'm wrong. I talked to more than one people that have a lot of time invested in the town and a lot of time invested in the fire department. And the, the other old muster truck is like still a property of town. And they have very strong ties here to the whole apparatus. So we could certainly move something. So if it frees up space for somebody, but we did evaluate it. It's again, one's a, I forget what year the Norton is. It's like a 20 or 30 and the other one's a 47. It's a year older than the one I used to drive. So it's like that can be dispositioned someplace, but there's a lot of ties to it when you try to move it in-house. A lot of people kind of like step up to say, oh, we can do this with it. We can do that with it. So I would have to go to you maybe develop a plan, what someone wants to do and see how, or yeah.
In your time.
Situation.
And in your time, has the 47 vehicle ever moved?
Nope.
I can't, no.
No, sir.
Yeah, we'll have to think, think about it. I know there's some emotional attachments to it.
Yep, it's like.
A rotting piece of rust, you know, it's not going to anyone good, you know, we should either decide we want it as a town and take care of it and use it and have it in Memorial Day parade, some things like that, or, or we should let someone who might care for it and give it another life.
Yep, okay. I can travel that room.
Yep.
Thanks, Scott. I'm done.
Yep. Thank you, chief. We're a little over time, but I thank you very much. I know we, we rushed through a couple of those questions, but we can, we can bring, we can get back to some at some point too.
Exactly. I, I'll avail anytime that you need me to come in. I apologize. We just come out of ladder training. So like soaked with sweat here. So it's like, I apologize.
Hey, safe travels this weekend or this week, chief, when you're off riding motorcycles. Be careful out there.
Yep. Be good and safe.
Wheels down.
We have our 7:15 baseball scoreboard donation. I don't.
Rick Lee is, Rick Lee is not here. So Scott, I'll leave it to you if you'd like to postpone it to the next meeting. Or if you'd like me to just try to present it on his behalf.
I'm fine giving a quick attempt to, to present. Peg, Chris, do you have a feelings on it?
No, that's fine. Okay. Let me just give you a quick.
We've talked about it a couple of times. So.
As you, as you recall, last November, the Community Preservation Fund provided $20,000 to Berlin Youth Baseball for a scoreboard and an announcing booth. The $20,000 was far from enough for the entire project. So fortunately, Berlin Youth Baseball was able to pitch in with a donation from Clinton Savings Bank to donate the scoreboard itself. So the town's funds are only responsible for paying for the installation of the scoreboard and the announcing booth. So the scoreboard, to my knowledge, the scoreboard has arrived and it's being installed as we speak. And maybe that's why Rick's not here. Maybe they're out playing baseball. And this appointment tonight was just for Rick to request that the board's acceptance of the donation of the scoreboard to the town. Are you ready for a motion?
Yeah, there are other questions for it? I just want to confirm there's, there's not sort of any material impact on town insurance rates to accept these issues?
It wouldn't be material impact. No, no, this would be considered a small structure.
Right. I was going to say, and the size of the structure is not more than like eight by 16 or something, even not even that big.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's not a building, so.
Right. So yes, is there a motion?
Yes, there is. I'll make a motion to accept the donation of the baseball scoreboard.
And I'll second it. A nice pun, Margaret, about you're going to try and pitch it. Well done.
Yeah. That was a whole.
Sure. Let's then quickly vote. Hawkins Eye?
Eye.
Eye.
Hey. Yay, scoreboard. And so let's go into town administrator report.
Oh, yes. And let me just add one thing. The town is going to be responsible for electricity. So we do have to sort out who's, who's account. The scoreboard is on and where the funding for the electricity for that will come from. So okay, town administrator report. Let me make this quick. First of all, update on radio antenna repairs. Chief Shartner is here, but he gave me a quick, a quick update on that. He has a second vendor who is going to look at the project and submit a quote for it. So that would make two. He has a third vendor who did not respond. And fire chief is looking at one more vendor. So they're still in the quote gathering stage. I was also asked to provide an update on the town cleanup, clean out, cleanup days. I myself have received several, I had made up checklists for procurement purposes, just to keep on file of old junk, unworking items that are being thrown away. So departments have filled that out. And I've received several, several of the checklist for the procurement files. So people are actually getting rid of stuff, which is, which is wonderful, at least in this building. And I wanted to, I wanted to highlight tonight, one thing Victoria has met with UMass Boston Gerontology regarding the possibility of doing a comprehensive survey in Berlin, which they've done for other towns. And this survey would involve sending out surveys, postcard, making calls on mental, social, emotional needs and resources such as housing and transportation. They would create a focus group to study the, this, this survey. And they would do peer-to-peer comparisons with other, with other comparable sized communities. Now, the reason Victoria pursued this is because number one, it had come up in the board's goals and objectives regarding senior, expanding programs for seniors and things like that. And then secondly, the request was presented as an ARPA funding request. So I have asked her to get the proposal. And if the board is interested, she's willing to meet with the board to explain this in more detail at your next meeting. Anybody, would you, would you be interested in hearing from Victoria on, on more details on this?
I would. I think mental health is one of those. I can't see it. Therefore, it doesn't exist problems that are out there. So absolutely.
Yep. I agree.
All right. That's it. That's all I have for tonight.
Right. So we have a couple of things later on in the agenda that we'll hit.
Yeah.
As well. Questions for Margaret right now? As well. Uh, questions for Margaret right now? Let's uh, move on to old business, uh, conservation land donation.
Conservation Commission vote uh, of June one is confirmed. Um, so Conservation Commission recommends uh, this land donation. And at this point, I would recommend that the board accept or approve um, the land donation um, and, and it, it being contingent on the Conservation Commission being responsible for any fees associated with the donation. So moved.
And seconded.
Thanks, we, uh, the Conservation Commission for their unanimous vote. Hawkins, aye?
Aye.
Stone, aye? Margaret, will something be memorialized to send out to Conservation, you know, to put in writing that, yes, we accepted it, but yes, on the ba- on the agreement that they're gonna pay or the, the, I forget the woman's name.
Yeah.
Said that she would pay for it, so there's no questions later on down the road?
Yes. Uh, Mary, would you please, uh, would you please do that tomorrow? Just get that out to Conservation um, and let them know the board's vote? Thank you.
Uh, uh, speaking of Chief Clark, who is just here, uh, Fire UMass Chief Contract Extension through twelve thirty-one twenty-two.
The board has a draft in your agenda packet tonight. I don't know if you have any questions on it. I know this is kind of a late-breaking thing. Um, this could most certainly wait uh, until your next meeting to be executed. This would become effective on July first, twenty twenty-two. Um, the salary for the six months of the agreement, July one through December thirty-first um, is uh, according to the budgeted salary amount for FY twenty-three and actually FY twenty-two as well. And there is an additional provision in this extension um, regarding the requirements of Chapter forty-eight, Section fifty-seven E, that if the Fire Chief has to respond and report for duty on a holiday due to an emergency, um, he is entitled to an additional day's pay, and that's according to statute. So I just wrote that in to memorialize it. Otherwise, there are no changes from the current contract or, or uh, previous extensions.
Margaret, does anything need to go before legal?
Yes, yes, absolutely. So if the board is, if the board um, is, is interested in uh, voting approval tonight, I, I would, I would ask you to make it subject to Labor Council's review and also the accountant's review to make sure that I got the numbers right on the wages.
The only question I had on the employment contract extension, um, and it's, it, if you scroll all the way down to the bottom, we need our roles flipped.
Oh geez, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah. I need to update that.
So I, I would make that motion contingent upon um, legal counsel's review of the contract.
I'll second it.
Uh, great, 'cause this is also not really much of a change. We've talked about the chief staying on. We're very happy these thing on to the end of the year. We're not trying to train, I write a Fire Chief at the same day we're hiring a town administrator. Um, I think we're ready to vote then. Hawkins, aye?
Keith, aye.
Stone, aye.
Okay. Uh, that brings us with twenty-six more minutes before our executive, retirement executive session to new business.
Okay, I submitted a request today, a written request. Um, I know this was on the agenda. Uh, but the Select Board back on March twenty-first appointed Matthew Thomas Esquire as Special Counsel for the Board of Assessors in the um, ZPE Solar ATB case. Um, and I am asking the Select Board to reappoint um, Attorney Thomas for this cycle, as he's still working with the assessors in that ATB case and toward a pilot agreement that would be in the interest of the town.
Uh, I would make that motion.
I would second that motion.
Great. Uh, uh, let's very vote. Hawkins, aye?
Keith, aye.
Stone, aye.
Okay, thank you. And then I am asking the board to authorize me to reappoint the Insurance Advisory Committee members for uh, this current appointment cycle for FY twenty-three.
So moved.
Seconded.
Ready to vote then? Hawkins, aye?
Keith, aye.
Stone, aye.
Cool, thank you.
Uh, Berlin signed sponsorship agreement.
There's not a whole lot here to discuss. Um, the last email I received from Peter Hoffman of the Economic Development Committee is that he is waiting on an updated sign quote and um, that he would be reviewing this agreement at some point later. Um, regardless, this is going to require uh, Town Council's uh, review. Um, and I know that it's kind of a lengthy agreement for not a, a huge amount of money. However, it does provide protections for the town that are necessary, in my opinion. So if this is for the board's review at this point, and as soon as I hear back from Peter, I'm happy to, I'm happy to uh, update you. Um, a policy in the long term, it's gonna be in the town's interest to, to have a sponsorship donation policy. And um, I, I have a framework for it. I just haven't, I haven't completed the policy yet to go with this agreement. So this was meant to kind of hold us over for now. I just don't want it to be on an agreement basis. I want it to be in accordance with a policy.
How many signs?
I'm looking. They're looking for three total. This is only for one sign on, yeah, on River Road West.
All right. So I'd make a motion to um, um, approve the sponsorship agreement.
Subject to Town Council Review and Approval, okay, yes.
I'll second it. Nice looking sign.
Sure, it, yeah, things looked decent to me. Um, uh, so I think we're ready to vote then. Hawkins, aye?
Keith, aye.
Stone, aye.
Well, thank you.
Go. Uh, then next, back to our favorite loud subject. Uh, permit, event permit policy and permit application for the by, for the noise ordinance bylaw.
Yes, and I wanna thank Mary for um, for putting together this first draft for the board's initial review. Um, board doesn't have to do anything on this tonight, but what I would ask is that over the next week, um, if at all possible, you um, you submit questions um, and comments, red lines even, on the draft uh, to Mary and me, so that updates can be made for your next meeting and we can keep working on this.
Does anyone have sort of any macro comments, scanning it over?
The one thing that I, that I suggested today, um, and there was already a start here, in the third paragraph on the first page. Uh, we do have to assure that the board retains its authority um, as licensing agent, including the authority to impose penalties for violations. So I suggested some, some broader wording uh, for that third paragraph, and I believe Mary has, has integrated that into the draft.
And I, I, that was my concern, too. So um, I'm pleased to see that in there then.
Yeah, I mean, I had a couple of small things, like the, the sprinkler question, you know, if it's in a town building or, I mean, if the building is already up to to code or we know about the building, I don't know how much that adds too much value. But I, there were a bunch of things there I wouldn't have ever thought about the importance of, you know, exactly insurance and, and other stuff. Um, I'd like to keep the administrative overhead a little light. But yeah, I, I, it generally, it's, it goes in the right direction. I'll, I'll provide some more detailed things as I think of them and write them down. Now, do you have any comments at this point?
Okay, so I scanned it quick, but not enough to make a, a educated comment on it.
So, the next week, if you just wanna email, email Mary and me, your, your comments, questions, red lines, um, we could incorporate those.
Yep. Uh, TA notice to intend to appoint the COA van driver.
Yep, we have another COA van driver who is starting on Thursday. Her name is Elizabeth Alvin. She's from Lancaster, Mass. Um, she is an experienced, um, is she an experienced van driver? And Victoria is very excited to have her come aboard. Um, I think she's just about done all of her pre, pre-hire requirements.
And I learned from the COA meeting that her name is really Betty Ann.
Betty Ann, not Elizabeth.
I guess not. Um, I would make a motion to appoint um, Betty Ann as the COA van driver.
I will second it.
Uh, I think it is great, so let's, I will, Hawkins, aye?
Keith, aye.
Stone, aye.
Thank you.
Great.
Yay, for the van driver.
Yes.
Um, that does actually give us some time to give some attention to what might be the, a, a critical thing to talk about tonight is the TA responsibilities from July first, the new TA starts.
Okay, so I, I um, you know, I, I consulted with, with June. Um, and I've made, you know, I've made some suggestions. I, I fully recognize this is the board's, um, this is the board's authority to approve or disapprove any of, of what I, what I suggest. Um, as you know, I have, I have expressed my willingness um, to um, continue helping the town through the transition or otherwise. And um, I'll just try to, I'll try to synthesize it into a couple of little pieces. I'm willing to extend my full-time employment for another two weeks. Um, so instead of through June thirtieth through July fifteenth, um, and I would be full-time. The only difference is that I would have to work mostly remotely. But I would be able to come in and spend one full day in the office each of those two weeks, um, so I could offer that. Um, I, you know, if the board approved that, um, I am gonna be required to be completely out and not working at all from July sixteen through July thirty-first, um, for retirement purposes. Um, they, they, they mandate that you have to step back. Um, and at that point, I would request that the board designate June as interim TA. Um, and for the budgeted hourly rate for TA, for the actual hours worked as TA, up to forty hours in each of the two weeks. She herself has noted, though, that she is going to be busy with her own year-end and other financial work. It's a very busy time starting in mid-July. Um, so she may not put in the forty hours, um, that would in turn achieve budget savings. And at the same time, um, I might be able to at least communicate with her by phone on any urgent matters during that period. And then starting August first till the new TA starts, I'd be willing, I'd be willing to stay on working for up to sixteen hours each week as needed on, on certain projects that have been, that were listed as high priority proj- projects in my TA to-do list. Um, and in the, and in my proposal. Um, and then beginning on the, and then for those uh, hours above that that are necessary for TA functions, I would ask that June remain as, as interim TA for those additional hours. And then beginning on the new town administrator start date, if the board is willing, I'm willing to volunteer um, to assist the TA at, for, you know, no pay. I just wanna be able to be a resource for the new TA um, with transitioning into the position. Um, and then I'd be available by phone after that. So I'm putting that out there for the board's consideration. I know a decision doesn't have to be made tonight, but I just wanted to, um, to offer that to you.
Um, I, I appreciate you uh, stepping up and being there potentially for another couple of weeks. I think that will help us through this tremendously, but Chris and Peg, do you have questions?
Um, not right now. Not right now, but.
I don't. I mean, Margaret, I think it's extremely generous um, for you to, to stay on and help. I mean, and it's, you know, it's, it's just a bad time, um, you know, with June and stuff. She needs to do that. So I'm extremely appreciative for any time that you give to the town for that. So I, I have no concerns at all. And, and Margaret, well, obviously, whatever the board can do to help during this interim, just ask.
I appreciate that. So um, I'll leave it to the board as to what, you know, as to where you wanna go with this and.
I think we'll bring it back. I don't think we're gonna vote on something, I think it's, I would, uh, I mean, money savings is, is great, but also not burning out uh, town employees and not overstressing you and also, also allowing you to start the, the process of make it clear that we are in the transition and not just using you as a crutch. I would look at whether or not getting a uh, temp for a month in the accounting department. So that, uh, are there sort of some, i- is it possible that some clerical stuff can be offloaded? Uh, and you know, June passes uh, down a step and then she passes it down a step so that temp to, so that June can spend a little bit more or be more available? Or that the year-end is not as, as time to say, I, I just, I have, I mean, June is great and all, but you know, I don't want eighty-hour weeks or hundred-hour weeks or, you know, uh, uh, other sort of stressors. So I, I would, I would explore that. I know that sometimes temps are more work than they bring in, and so I would, I know we prescribed something if it wasn't going to be a benefit.
Uh, June is here, and I'm sure she's heard that, so I'll, she, she and I can, can discuss that and get her thoughts on it. Uh, keep in mind also that Amy uh, will be an additional five hours a week starting July one, which will help a little bit, but might not plug that entire gap.
Margaret, Amy's not, is she still supporting Highway?
She is, she is currently, yes, until July one, when the new position um, is able to be advertised.
Okay. So there might be an option as well, instead of a temp, if maybe you know, Amy throws in a couple extra hours, she already knows the town, she just turns her, actually, she doesn't even turn around, she just looks to her left and June's there. So options.
I, 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 that gets that same sort of intent is adding some extra hours for, you know, the months of, of July and August um, to help get through all the stuff I, I, I would at least be open to.
All right, so we could bring this back. You wanna bring this back next week?
Um, yeah, if you think something is ready or at least are two weeks away, things, I mean, it, it has to be in the neck, the next couple of weeks, so.
It does. Okay.
Um, uh, let's see, uh, board questions and comments. I think I actually want to start with, with Peg, although you might not do your whole list, but you had an article you wanted us to.
Yes.
Look at, that we'll fall under this section.
Yep, so there was a letter that I wrote, uh, Margaret, I didn't include you in it because, well, that was purposeful. Um, so. Um, so you know, Scott, um, Chris didn't know if you had any comments. I went back in and I actually changed like one spot where I called it T one, T two. I changed to TA one and TA two, 'cause that's what they are. So.
I, I thought it looked great.
I, I did, too. I think I told you. It, it's excellent. Um, and I, so I would make a motion to approve her if you need it.
All right, all right. And I won't say anymore, 'cause I'll cry, so thank you. Okay.
This week, since we might be adjusting a couple of dates, you know. Keep that in mind, too. Yes, doubt, uh, so on that note, uh, Chris, do you have any board uh, community updates, so that we'll go back to Peg, uh, but.
Something Peg, or do you wanna go ahead, or?
Give her a moment.
I have a book.
I have two liaison updates sent a comment. Do you want, so.
Yes, yep.
All right, okay. So I did go to the IAC meeting on May twenty-sixth, which seems like a long time ago. It's just a very short um, um, report. Um, Richard is going to draft a policy for OPEB, and the IAC is going to look at the template of the policy at a meeting. Uh, Janet from CMR PC uh, will be asked to come and meet with all the parties. I believe that was Margaret's Select Board FinCom and is that, was that it?
Select Board and FinCon, that's it, yes.
Okay. And that's all I had from that meeting. Lot of notes, sorry. Let's see, I went to Council on Aging on the thirty-first, and there's two thousand dollars left in the budget at this point. The new driver Betty is, in addition to John, who's sort of a new driver, too, I guess, is in training this week. Betty says she could do weekends, discussion on revolving accounts. Um, Victoria is to check, is going to check with June about that, whether it's possible for them um, with the rising gas prices. Uh, increase, it, it was suggested that they increase suggested donations. Um, the formula grant in the COA account. Uh, Bob and Pat Wheeler will remain co-chairs for now. Uh, Victoria to send a letter to Westerend concerning his non-resi- non-residency in Berlin and being a member of the COA, COA. Um, and then on the subject of the Powderhouse News, Clinton Offset to start publishing early twenty twenty-three. And Abby, there's an Abby Kelly Foster presentation um, on June twelfth at the South Commons. Now, I thought, I thought Abby Kelly Foster was just, you know, the um, the school um, that we, we hear about. Um, but it's actually a suffragette. Su- surprise to me. Um, they also had discussions on having an ice cream social at Berlin Farms for the Council on Aging and possibly the seniors, I wasn't sure. Um, a genealogy presentation um, done by the library and the seniors and using the kitchenette mosaic. And the possibility of an antiques expert to, to value residents' items. Um, the next meeting is June. The next meeting is June twenty eight. Um, so with those two liaison reports, there was just one comment that I wanted to share with Peg and Scott. And that is that I'm going to be going in for some surgery. On June twenty first. Back surgery. So I will be. Hmm, out of sort of out of commission for like a week or so at least. I'm sure I can probably resume Zoom meetings though. Um, after that. So.
The name of a good PT. I got two for you and they'll work you.
I'm probably gonna need a lot of work once this is done.
Walk, 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 walk. That's what both of mine said. Walk, 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 walk.
Scott and I had a Scott and I had a brief discussion about possibly. Canceling the twenty first if that's possible, right?
Right.
Okay.
It is sort of my intent on sort of the Tuesdays after Monday holidays to see if we can cancel them. I haven't looked that far out. Uh, I I've looked ahead for the next like nine minutes, and then that's about as far as my sort of thought patterns go for the time being. But. I don't have I don't have committee updates at this point. I know historical is working on a bunch of things. June and I have. June Miller and I have exchanged a couple of emails and I I hope to reach out to her. Their next meeting unfortunately is is Wednesday night and Arson is meeting this coming weekend, I think, and I am sadly on vacation out of the States. So. We'll miss those. Peg, do you have other things?
Yes, I do. All right. All right, I can do them in eight minutes. Watch this. All right. Uh, con con is Fred still here? Yes, he is. Um, Fred, they talked about that they have all the stuff for the fence on Linden Street, but Carolyn threw it back to you and said it's up the highway for a date. Do you have a date? Ish.
Can you hear? Raise the hand. Yep.
Hi, Fred.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Um, yeah, so we do have a date. I was just talking with Sue today is we're going to start the week of the twenty first of June.
Perfect.
Uh, we have all materials, the bolts, nuts, everything.
Yay.
Cool.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you, Fred. All right. Right. So let's see. That's it. That's it. They talked about. The forty forty caves. I guess there's complaints from people driving. ATVs, motorbikes around there. So they're going to do a walkthrough. I reminded them that if. They all decide to go, they need to post a meeting. They just all can't show up because who knows what's going to be discussed. They talked about Highland Ridge. Krista Collins was there from SVT. Since there seems to be a backlog of all the paperwork for getting. All the restrictions through the state there. SVT, I think, is meeting next week. To potentially entertain taking over that land. You know, from from the the people who own it now, which would just be a lot easier. Conservation didn't really seem to have any forms about that. There would still be a conservation restriction put in there. That's really what they were concerned about. So more to come on that. Maplewood seems to be going through, I guess, that there's still more dirt going up the road. I guess they went up a little bit early, a few days. People were not happy with that. This Thursday, I'm going to Earthworks, so I'll be part of it, sitting in the back listening intently on the whole Earthworks by law. Hopefully, that Margaret can get done before you're gone. I mean, as you said. You highly doubt that the state would say, no, sorry, you can't bring any dirt, but maybe they can limit it. So we can only bring in that much dirt. For that. Going to Border Health for the septic. I wrote the letter, so they're going to take a look at it. Margaret, I hope to have that back to you. I know that you spoke with.
Evan.
Thank you. So hopefully, you know, he can take a look at that. We can see what can be done. I'm going to CPC on the twenty third to talk to them about some ARPA funding. I don't know. I know that the gazebo on South Common was identified as an ADA issue. But it's a it's a high price tag. They had listed it at about thirty five thousand, and that was a couple of years ago. But I don't know if we truly need it or if we just need to look at potentially repairs for that. But what I really want to push for, since the scoreboard is going up, since the fields are becoming more active, there are zero ADA parking spaces down there, zero squat, none. Uh, the price tag is not all that much. It's like twelve hundred. Uh, you know, to pave it, line it, make sure that a van can get in there, put a decal on it, put a couple of signs up on it. So. I'll talk to them. And you know what? And I'll let you know how the process goes. And that's what I told Anna, whatever you need, let me know, and then I can share it. With you guys. And I know that Fred is still here and he's busy. One of the things that I could talk to him about also ARPA funding was the doors downstairs on the town office buildings. I guess the locks fine, but the doors are. Warping, you know, a little bit. So you know what? If we have the fundage and Fred can provide, you know, number of doors, dimension, size, et cetera, et cetera. And go back to CPC, then back to you guys. And then. Over to June, isn't that quite the adventure to go for for money? At least I can get an understanding of the process and share. Uh, that's it. And I'll keep you updated. I'll let you know next week on. Uh, Earthworks and Border Health. What health is it next week? What health might be next week. But I'll keep you posted. I'll let you know.
Uh, great. I think we managed to get through select boards and comments. We do have an eight o'clock time certain for an executive session. Uh, for those people in the audience now, this is not my legal notice, which I'll read again in a little moment, but that. Uh, I don't believe there's a plan to reconvene the Select Board meeting after we will adjourn from executive session. Uh, and so we go into it. People want people are playing at hanging around or coming back for it. There might not be anything to come back for. Uh, and. I see some people in the audience who are here for our executive session. I don't know if we want to start just promoting them up so that we can sort of start the hearing. No, we don't want.
Hold off until you make the announcement and we go in.
Right, sorry, because that gives away too much by who we invite forward. See, this is why we have people here to remind me of things. Then my guess is I have to vamp for three minutes.
No.
Fresh break.
You could actually call it and, you know, you could actually read this this paragraph first.
Oh, there's two paragraphs I have to read.
One, well, you have to read the notice of executive session on the agenda. And you might have something else that you need to read too.
I'm sorry, I'm comparing the two of them just to they might actually. So here we go. Uh, the board will enter executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one A. Reason number one to discuss the reputation whoops, the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health. Rather than professional competence of an individual or discuss the disciplinary or dismissal. Or complaints or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual. Uh, and will will adjourn from executive session.
Only to adjourn the open session?
Well, you really should say, and we'll return to open session.
Only to adjourn the sure and only to adjourn the meeting.
We are supposed to come back to open session to adjourn.
Need a vote?
Yep, it's I'm just reading the other thing. I was supposed to say it was just sort of a slightly shorter version of that includes all the the same words. So. I said, so I I think it is Hawkins eye.
He five.
Stone eye.
Okay, so we are shutting off the recording.
Right, we're gonna shut. Um, not yet. I think I have to say the board will now meet an executive session. Restored to purpose one of the Massachusetts Chapter Law. Well, and I said that before, the board will not be giving any open session to end the executives at the end of executive session.
Yep.
And so I think we turn off recording now and remove people who. Uh, we have, thank you. We've completed the executive session, and so we're here to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Hawkins eye.
He five.
Stone eye.
Uh, thank everyone for going through fast the stuff earlier today so we could spend time in the detail necessary in the executive session.